So in regard to the HR operations of what we're trying to accomplish, I'm going to take a stab at that, but please understand the role I'm in versus our operations and nursing leaders and things like that. So when I say furlough, unemployed, laid off, those don't mean a heck of a lot to me, so the ins and outs of that I'm going to be weak on. The reality of the situation is we don't have a lot of patients coming in, and we've asked patients not to come in out of the setting of public safety. And so, and we've been regulated to not do elective surgeries, things like that. That's, you know, it's the reality of the situation. So there are people literally that do not have anything to do. We have been trying very hard to repurpose, cross-train, et cetera, without saying that we are going to not have you employed at this facility anymore. And I guess that's kind of the best way I can put that forward. There is anticipation that, you know, as we go through surge, that everyone will have plenty to do. There's anticipation that once this hopefully is over sooner as opposed to later and everyone can safely return to work, that is fine. We'll be back as we work. And while we do that, we are trying to find very unique ways to get people to, you know, whether it's online training that they need to do, accomplish every year that we're mandated to do, things like that, and it's just anything that we can have people doing, absolutely are trying to do that, but the reality is there is not enough. The reality is, is that you can imagine the number of employees we have and the revenue coming in right now, it's not lining up for us as a business either, but at the same time, we are committed to the healthcare of this region.
Thank you.
Counselor Niter?
I have a couple more questions. The 20% to 80% number, just to remind me, is that the projected number of totally infected when this is done of this virus?
So yeah, you can think of it as the number of projected people that got the disease, or you can think of it as the people who are getting the disease but not having symptoms. Either way works. The way I would describe it is if you had a blood test that could say for sure had it or didn't have it, and we took it, you know, a year from now and ran it through everybody, we're still lost in the number somewhere between 20% and 80% of the population would have a positive after that.
Yeah, symptomatic or asymptomatic, if you just tested everybody and saw who had the antibodies or whatever. So does that range, does that, if that range differs, if our 20% are infected versus 80%, does that change your modeling? And if so, what number in there did you choose for your model? Does it have anything to do with their?
It absolutely changes our modeling, and it absolutely changes what we use for the first part of any model like this is what's called the attack rate. And the attack rate is the number of people that get the disease. Now, the attack rate is then divided out into people who had symptoms and people who didn't. And to go further into that bag of weeds would get you a degree in epidemiology that I don't know that you want, but that's the first assumption we use in this modeling. And so I can tell you that I've modeled this everywhere personally, everywhere from 20% attack rate out to an 80% attack rate with a 20% symptomatic rate, and we've done it all the way in between. And the current data, I think we started with a 50% attack rate, a slightly smaller symptomatic rate.
Okay. And then, I guess the part somebody can hopefully help me with, because I didn't quite grasp this, you're talking about the trend line or the number of people that are going to the hospital, the number hospitalized is tracking exactly kind of as you're projecting? I think, I don't know if it was Dr. Basil or somebody said that, but how do we, if we don't know the number of, the total number of people infected, how do we, I guess?
How do we think we're right?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's a piece I'm struggling with. How do you have a confidence that it's tracking exactly like you projected? I'm missing something.
No. So it turns out you can put in lots of different variables, like I said, and get a curve. And it turns out several of those curves will give you a similar number to, or a similar curve depending on the variables you put in. And what we're trying to do is use data from New York's hospitalizations and Italy's hospitalizations and Washington's hospitalizations and do things called regressions to try to find a mathematical formula that accounts for all three of those. You know, how many people got infected, all of those variables that we put in there. And then we put that in to South Dakota. And we say, okay, if that's South Dakota, knowing that we're not going to be able to test perfectly, that we can't do all the tests that we want, what's the next best number we could do that's never going to be that controversial? Well, that's going to be people in a hospital. And so we try to do our predictions on people in a hospital and people on a ventilator, and then see if we can predict those as people come in and get sick. And thankfully enough, our model has been tracking fairly accurately to those numbers.
Okay. And then finally, so when you're looking at other areas of the world and in the country, do you try to make adjustments for all kinds, for factors such as, because epidemiology has a lot to do with demographics and things like that. So like if you go to Florida and it's a retirement community, maybe your median age is a lot higher than it might be here, the number of people that might have chronic conditions in a particular geography, New York City was brought up, the fact that they're just, they're right next to each other all the time versus being spread out in Sioux Falls, do you try to make corrections for that sort of thing?
Absolutely. On the chart that I showed you with the two humps, the first hump is based on the population of Sioux Falls and how densely populated they are. The real change in that graph for the second hump isn't that we manipulated anything about the virus, it's that we made the people farther apart, so it's slower to spread to the rest of them. So we can model by county and say, okay, the population density of many Haha County is this, and so we think it'll spread this fast. The population in Buffalo, South Dakota, is not nearly as dense, and so we think this will plot a lot slower in Buffalo than it will here. And so we're able to model both of them at the same time.
Okay. And then if I could, one last that I just thought of, and thank you, this is very helpful. Obviously, every hospital has certain things that they can do, and I'm not in the medical field, but you know, they could do Level X trauma, things like that. So there might be certain things that a Sanford might be able to do in Sioux Falls that a small-town hospital just doesn't have the ability to do. So do you have, do you have any sort of projection, or have you figured out how many people that need hospitalization in the state of South Dakota by a percentage are going to end up at one of our two facilities? Because if you're in a rural town, you're coming here likely.
We've done those projections. I can't give you the numbers off the top of my head, but in that, built into that hospitalization rate is very much a factor of this is the number of people that are going to come to Sioux Falls to get their care, and this is, and what we're working on as a model is really the goal of bringing as many people here as we need to and bringing people back to those smaller hospitals to recover, you know, after they've gotten through the worst of their illness. Now, I can't speak for Avera if they're using the same plan as we are, but I can tell you that that's the way that we're planning to do it. Because I agree with you, the differences, I grew up in a little town in northwest Iowa, and the differences in their ability to handle, you know, incredibly sick patients versus their ability to do it in Sioux Falls are completely different, and we have to be sensitive to that.
Okay. Thank you. Very good.
Questions, counselors, before we move on? Counselor Staley?
Just one more. We've been telling people to stay home if they're sick. Doesn't matter. We've been telling people to stay home if they're sick, and I suspect there are people who are staying home who are really sick. Right? And there could be people who have stayed home, gotten really sick and died. Do we have any way of tracking that?
The state of South Dakota, obviously, anytime there is a death is notified. And if they were diagnosed and then unfortunately died at home, we will find out what those numbers are. Obviously, whenever we talk to a patient, we go through, you've been diagnosed with COVID, these are your instructions. And whether we diagnose them in one of our clinics or in one of our testing centers or if we diagnose them and then call them on the phone, we lay out criteria for them just like we would with any other illness to say, these are the important things that you need to call us back for, these are the important things you need to call an ambulance for. And we make sure that they're aware of them as well as we are, because obviously, our goal isn't to prevent people from getting to the hospital, our goal is to make sure the right people get to the hospital.
Right. But if someone were to die at home and there would be, you aren't doing active testing on the deceased people, right? I mean, especially like an older, an elderly person who maybe was, who got sick and just got, didn't have anyone else around, the cause of death, I mean, unless you did an autopsy and, we aren't really tracking that.
That's tracked by the state of South Dakota.
Of the cause of death?
Right.
Counselor Starr?
Mr. Chair, I guess more for Director Franken, if I could. One of the things that, out of all the calls and letters or emails that I've received over the last couple of days have been pretty consistent, is did we add an economic part of this to the modeling? And what I didn't get, what wasn't consistent in my emails that I got from people, there was a lot of calls for what's the economic impact to my business, but there wasn't a lot of economic data talking about if I spend 10 days in the ICU intubated and then the time that it takes to come off and balancing those two things. So is there an economic component to where we're doing? Do we have an economist on board? Are we doing finance with this? Or how do we do, how do we balance that cost to business with the balance of loss of life as well as the loss of productivity and loss of workforce? And I'm thinking I'm getting deeper than where you're going with public health, so, but I got to ask, or I got to start somewhere.
I think you're asking really good questions, and that's, that is the, you know, the balancing challenge, right? Is, you know, there's the, the pretty straightforward economics of when businesses are not seeing customers come into their businesses, or when they have to, you know, shutter their doors because of reasons of, you know, stopping the spread of COVID, or whatever the case may be, or when they finally feel compelled, it's not worth it for them to stay open. That is, there's a lot of economic impacts out there right now, and I think Mayor Tenhaken has done a really great job in making sure it's well-understood because we, you know, it certainly weighs heavy on my heart every time we have to be making the next policy decisions. What is this going to do to people on the front lines that are working in jobs that they absolutely need to, you know, have that job in order to maintain their rent, maintain getting food for their families, et cetera? But yes, there is certainly, and I know we have not had an economist come on board yet, I wish we had the luxury of time to be able to really do that at this, you know, right now, but that's certainly something we always have to be taking into account, are those economic impacts as well as what you talked about. And that is the toll it takes on our community when people are very sick and ill, you know, through COVID as well as compounding that with other chronic illnesses that they're dealing with, so.
Makes sense. I guess my other question, and it's probably outside of your realm, but maybe for one of the doctors or from the hospital systems, what does 10 days in an ICU bed cost? I know there's going to be a range, but that's, you know, we get told all the time to ask, what do things cost? I know what it costs, or I've got a pretty good idea.
I honestly can't answer that. I could call our finance office and get that directly for you, but...
But it's not a couple hundred bucks a day?
No.
You know, it's tens of thousands by the time that you get done, and so that's where I guess I'm balancing some of that. Yes, are there a number of people who are going to end up in that situation? I keep going back to the quality of care that we talked about earlier, and I think we talked about it a little bit earlier too as well, that when do you stay at home too long? And does it cost you more from the financial side of it? Because if we're going to break this down into a monetary issue and the effects to the economy and whether the hospital systems are able to get paid and what insurance reimbursements, and that takes us even crazier places than modeling what COVID does by the time, but to balance those two costs. And again, I've said this pretty consistently with the people that I've spoken with over the last couple of days, is the quality of care, being not able to save people who we would if we weren't full. And that quality, yes, there's a death rate that goes with this virus, there's an intubation rate, there's a, you know, lack of things in between. What scares me the most are those people that we could have helped in normal situations, but now we're in a peak situation and they're not going to get the quality of care that they normally would. And that's not to insinuate that either hospital system would provide inadequate care, but the reality of this, we're going to get to that point, or the, and we're trying to do everything we can to get away from that. And how you balance that in an economic versus the lives of people that are affected by this. So that's me babbling on, and you did a nice job off in your head to go along with it. So I'm not sure it's a question, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'll pass the gavel back, we'll move on to the next topic.
You need to keep it, because I think I need to set this one up too. I'm sorry.
It's off the hook.
Sorry. If I get to talk sometimes.
Yeah. Yeah, the next topic, and our final topic is just questions and discussion amongst our council regarding the proposed stay-at-home order. So obviously, we talked about that early on, and the data that we presented today to you all is what's driving kind of the next step I think we need to take. And trust me, it's very challenging for me to say that we should do less right now. And so what I would like us to consider as a council on this ordinance, and the city attorney is going to be talking with me about this, we've, ships passed in the night today and haven't had a chance to connect, as if that can be either withdrawn or voted down. But then what I would like to do is have you as a council potentially look at bringing any amendments you would feel comfortable with to our existing no lingering ordinance that would help with some enhanced social distancing measures we could consider. Because based on the conversation again today, the point is, and you heard it straight from the doctors, we're tapping on the ceiling of what they're comfortable with. And so without doing a stay-at-home, what else can we do in our city to protect the capacity of these systems right now as we move into the next 30 days? So that's going to be the kind of the proposal or the conversation from the administration between now and Tuesday. So that's just me, my opening comments. Marshall, I'll let you lead some conversation on that. Okay. So do we open it up for public comment after that? Is that our topic?
It's kind of the setup, so public input would be now.
So if we have input on the proposed stay-at-home order, come on up.
Sierra Bruce, Sioux Falls. I just got off the phone with the domestic shelter people. If we shelter these people anymore, the violence of domestic is going to rise. We have issues right now because they're in the home, they cannot get away from their abuser. So being a shelter-in-place is going to cause more domestic violence. And I'm here to say this, and I hope the mayor understands, because I don't care what the chief says. The officers are against shelter-in-place. Their stress level is high, it is getting dropped in their lap. If we start arresting these people, giving them tickets, because you cannot put a shelter in place and tell the police that they cannot enforce a class-two misdemeanor because they're going to enforce it. I'm letting you know right now that the police is against this, and your chief of police should have been here to testify on that. From upper management to officers, they are against it. They're going from call to call to call. If we drop this in their laps, their stress level is going to go through the roof. We have to consider the domestic shelters here. I know, I'm not going to say of a business, because an employee got ahold of me that two of their people in our facility had COVID. One is in the hospital as of right now, and the other one is in a hotel quarantining. And the employee texted me on my phone last night and said that they're hiding it. The health department knows of this situation, but if we're going to put all of the businesses that are in place that have COVID, that are tested COVID, we have one particular one that hasn't even made that list. This incident happened almost two weeks ago. The person that is in here is still fighting for their life at Avera. So if they want to lie and they want to tell me that it's not, it's false, I'll come out with the names of the patients and where this location is at. So we need to put all the lists of people, like Deuce's Casino and everybody else, and we need to add this facility in it. Because this facility is no better than all the other ones catching COVID. We cannot pick and choose what we're going to put on the businesses and news media here. If we put the shelter in place, riots are going to happen, you best believe it, and I'm telling you, riots are going to happen. Protest is going to happen, and violence is going to raise on the streets here. This is what's going to happen with shelter-in-place. Please listen to Governor Noem when she said, "We are not here to control everybody, we have constitutions here. We're not prisoners here." The H1N1 people died last year of the H1N1. The flu season's coming around, do we need to wear masks? Do we need to do a shelter-in-place because of the H1N1? We got to think about our domestic shelter here. The director wasn't here to speak on it today, so I called and reached out to them. We need to, we need to think about this, because we're keeping our abusers and the houses, our victims, their pimps and their abusers, and they cannot get out, because y'all making them so paranoid. And then if they can only go to the grocery store, and they can only go this way, and they can only go this way, their abuser's going to follow them. There's no way to seek out of this. And we got to think about our police department. I know the mayor don't want to hear about how I'm pounding on this police department, but there's more to come on this. But the police department cannot, cannot go to these police calls, because neighbors are going to call our neighbors, and neighbors are going to call our neighbors, just like code enforcement and health department, they're always nitpicking, and the police is going to keep going to these calls and going to these calls and going to these calls. They are overwhelmed with these things. If we're going to put this in place and break into class-two misdemeanor, the mayor and the city attorney cannot tell the chief, "Don't enforce it when we get police calls." They're going to enforce it, they're going to write tickets and/or they will arrest you and put you in a jailhouse. We got to do that. So y'all got to think about that. Domestic abuse, right now, the domestic abuse is at a standstill right now. It hasn't gone up and it has not gone down yet.
Thank you. Come on up.
David Graham here with Crawford's Bar and Grill downtown Sioux Falls. I've reached out to many of you and appreciate the feedback and the conversations we've had. The stay-at-home order, I guess I'm not too concerned about that, as we've already been shut down as a restaurant for over a month now. My concern is what is going to happen moving forward? When do you guys predict we'll be able to open? Obviously, it's a fluid situation, very difficult to predict. More importantly, the reason I'm here is I'd like to propose kind of a solution. My facility is limited to 10 people. We shut down voluntarily March 17th. Kind of wanted to give it a two-week hiatus to figure out where this was going. Obviously, that was extended, you know, and once we realized the severity of this, we realized we needed to keep it down for public, keep it shut down for public safety, et cetera. So my thoughts are moving forward here, if we have a 10-person limit for a facility like mine, based off the square footage, you know, there are smaller restaurants that have, you know, the same 10-person capacity, you know, obviously, they can put them in there and still probably make money. You know, whereas my facility's about mid-range size, and then you have Minerva's, you know, so I'm a drop in the bucket compared to the size they have. So I'm wondering if, facilities are adequately spread out, if we can't maybe change the 10-person no loitering order to maybe just increase it a little bit based off the facility's footprint, you know? So that's my question, that's all I have for you guys. Obviously, you're getting it from both sides right now, and it's pretty difficult for you, so I do not envy you, I respect what you do, but I don't envy you right now. I'm glad I'm not you, so. But again, appreciate it, and then I looked at this graph, I might have missed the presentation on the front end of it, but are they saying that we're predicting 40,000 people by June 8th in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, based off this graph? I hope not, but if that is true, I don't know what the data input is coming in and coming out, but you know, I mean, a graph is only as good as the data in, data out type deal. Garbage in, garbage out, you get what you want, you know? I mean, we can find statistics everywhere, and I hope this is not true, but I missed the presentation there, and yeah, respect the doctors and what they do, so anyway. But thank you to everybody, and that's all I've got. Never done this before, so do I leave now?
Yep, you're good. Great job. Thank you. We'll let the director just fix things here, and there we go. Welcome, sir.
Hi, Corey Hanson again. Just a business owner in Sioux Falls, but I did like what Teresa said about, there's other things we can do, but just the idea that don't go out unless it's essential, right? That's like a little bit softer order than just to stay at home. And in my business, I've been fortunate and blessed, and me as a business owner, I'll be fine. Like, we can ride this out, like my wife and I and family, what I'm more worried about is my employees, and half of my employees, half of them, I've encouraged, just to make their lives better, I feel like that's my mission on this earth, and half of them in the last year, year and a half, have bought new homes, their first home are brand-new homes. And now they're sitting here thinking, "Well, Corey, am I going to have a job tomorrow?" I don't, I don't know. I don't know on Tuesday night if we're open, if we're essential, if we're not essential. And I was one of the people that watched, again, like I said, for all four hours on Wednesday night at home of your meeting, and I appreciate what you guys do. I would hate your job, and it's definitely not probably what you signed up for originally, but thank you for what you're doing. What's frustrating me too as a business owner right now is I'm getting phone calls from business owners talking about injunctions and lawsuits against the city, if and when this new stay-at-home order comes to be to fruition, and it's just so unknown, with the PPP thing going through, and I'm talking to my bank and CPAs and just attorneys, and I'm like, I don't even know if I can accept the PPP or if I shouldn't accept the PPP, because if I can't keep my employees, do I have to pay it back? Do I have to pay it back with interest? It's a mess. And I think before we decide anything, if there's anything we can do, is just, is just slow down the jets. And I'm so thankful for the hospitals. I mean, my life is blessed, and like I said, those guys, I've had three brain surgeries and five strokes, they've kept me alive, and I'm so thankful for the medical care we have in this town and the people. So I just ask if we can just kind of slow down and say, what can we do instead of this next order? Because I think we've done such a good job as a city. I mean, everybody's business is down, but before we just say, hey, you got to close, because I don't know who's essential. I tried to look that up Wednesday night, and it was a sister thing or whatever you guys said, and I don't know what we fall under, and I had a call from, I talked to Dustin Hans from the street department, and he said, "Corey, are you essential?" I don't know. So if a tree falls on a power line and we can't fix their chainsaws because we're not open, I don't, I don't know what the answers are, and I don't know if anyone knows the answers. So anyway, my ask is just to kind of slow down, maybe check a look and say, what else could we do better, a little bit different? So thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott Stube, and first of all, I want to thank you guys for the work that you're doing here. I often on had thought about maybe getting into politics and that, but seeing what you're going through right now, yeah, it's kind of scaring me off. But two, you can kind of relate to the point that I want to make here, because it isn't the things that you expect that get you, but the things you don't expect, that's what ruins your day. So I guess we can honestly say there's not a single person in this room, not a single expert can tell us whether or not we're going to have another Smithfield in this town or in this area. We don't know that. And when we were talking earlier today about, you know, we might be pushing that ceiling, what happens if we have another Smithfield? What happens if we have a chemical car derail downtown and we got to put, you know, we got, the hospitals all of a sudden in the middle of surge have to decontaminate 200 people and put 30 more on respirators, you know? So, you know, and those numbers, those projections, we had some very intelligent folks say they're middle-of-the-road protection. So already, we have that possibility that they could be worse, so that we might actually be breaking that ceiling just for planning on that. So I absolutely understand the push to stay the course, I absolutely understand, you know, the economic harm that it is doing to small businesses and individuals in this town. But I really would like the council to keep in mind the fact that it's the stuff you don't expect that gets you. Don't cut our margins too close. Give us a little bit of wiggle room in case there's an unforeseen emergency in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Bruce Meyer again, and I appreciate the time that we have here to speak. It seems to me like with, you know, I don't want to disrespect the hard work and the, the good modeling that's gone in. I think we have a lot of smart, intelligent people do that, but these models continue to change dramatically, almost weekly, sometimes daily, and I'm really afraid that we're seeing too many trees out there and we're not seeing forest. You have so many of these models that just go from 50 million people infected in America down to this many down, and then here in Sioux Falls, aren't there 40 hospital rooms right now? 40 people in rooms right now? Okay, that's after all the infections we've had. And I think if you want to take in the human factor, the protection of life, you have to take in a lot of other things, like the lady said about the domestic violence, how many people, you can throw out all kinds of numbers. How many people have died of meth and opioid overdoses in the last two weeks or last month? How many other things that just beyond, you know, that we can't protect every single person at every single point in life? We have not been given that authority or that power or that blessing. So I appreciate the fact that you had talked about maybe bringing things down a notch, talking about lingering instead of staying at home, maybe changing this. I would encourage the council, and I hope that God blesses you with the wisdom, to see this, that we, I think we have an opportunity here. If we're the hotspot in America, Smithfield is the hotspot, can't we take that as an opportunity to find the antibodies that might help other people? That's a very, very good, realistic, controlled, control group that we should be able to study, identify, and use to the best of our ability to get people back to work, not just stay at home or shelter in place or any of these other things, but go ahead of that, go beyond that. Like I said the other night, be bold and show us, let Sioux Falls show everybody how we can lead the state, the city, maybe even the country, to find a good formula, to take that control group, find the antibodies, and turn this thing around. All these people are going to be out of work, business is going to be lost. That is a huge human factor and a huge cost of life and liberty, too. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Welcome. Please come on up.
Again, Troy Jones in business. I'll just, now we're getting a little bit more in an area that I feel really comfortable because of what I do every day. You know, we've got 1,000 manufacturing employees in all of our, my partners, I got 1,000 manufacturing companies. We don't, in South Dakota and in Minnesota, we don't have a single case, nor do we know if their families have a single case. We have some very aggressive practices with regards to gloves and how product gets, goes from cell to cell, and how we have our lunchroom organized and how we do this, and we're not unique. I think that she, her numbers, I think she builds a good model, but she has some assumptions in there. That number, we got 10,000 now. I'll bet we have 5,000 because our companies are really doing a good job. The one company we have in Sioux Falls, it is not out of the ordinary. Now, I'm also have been the president of a counseling service, volunteer, nonprofit, so I dealt a lot with people who had counseling problems, and my wife's in HR. Plus, we have to manage all these companies. There's two ways to get outcomes, and one of them is a carrot. We, I think we've done so good with regards, we got a really good opportunity here to do things, pound this down, do the right thing in our community, boom, 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 and we encourage people through leadership and encouragement as opposed to the stick. And I think the thing is that we have to maybe turn, I want to, you want to know what you can do to maybe get these numbers better, is maybe turn it and start these other businesses, which are not me, we're going to be in business. I mean, so our companies are all essential. These people that are not, they need to know when it's going to turn, and they're holding their employees on their staff, and they took that PPPs, which if you close them down, you did that shelter, I mean, that's, they just defaulted on a loan. But if you're not going there, but turn it around and let's do more to give them best practices, because this is going to be with us more than just getting to this peak date. It's going to be longer, and so let's give some best practices out of companies like ours to the smaller people on how they can do things to keep the social distancing, satisfy their customers. Let their customers come and tell them how to wipe things, you know, like, okay, you guys were on TV and you weren't doing, you're doing better now. At my company, you walk into an office, the person walks into our office, we wipe down everything in front of them. They sit down, we don't shake their hands, we wipe down everything when they leave. Customer, supplier, employee. We do Zoom meetings. So the point is that you do these things. I think we can do, we can help these businesses by giving them best practices and give them hope that they're going to turn around. And if you give them hope, they will even perform better, these voluntary things that you're asking of them. They will help their employees do better, they'll do better at home, they will know to their spouse, "We're going to survive. My employer's going to be here. My business is still going to survive. We got hope." Don't throw the hopes. I think what, if you want to do something, give these people a carrot. Don't slap them. Give them a carrot, and we'll get better results. We'll beat these numbers. I, I know you're going to do it, and we've got to go longer than just till May 15. We've got to do this till July, so thank you very much.
Okay, and Bridget, if you could just hold on. Tom's just going to adjust the microphones a little bit. I think so it just picks up better. Okay, welcome, Bridget.
I was wondering how I was going to reach that. Hi, I'm Bridget Myers. Obviously, I own two businesses in Sioux Falls. I just want to know if there's some clarification on my business? As you can see, I currently serve on the State Board of Massage Therapy. I'm the vice president. Actually, the lady that stands behind Noem and all the videos that you're seeing, that is who I report to. So the state is telling us that we can still work, and so I've got some confusion there. Now I'm being told by the city health that there is, you know, a difference that they do want businesses shut down. So I think there's a little bit of confusion there with some of us that have state licenses through the state, and then now we're being told by our city that there's changes. The graphs that you shown, that you showed today, does that include the change with the 65 and older? Because it says that you guys did that on March 18th, so is that including the other change that you added that added the 65 and older? Because I feel like that was a whole chunk of our population that started staying home. They weren't able to run out and go golf and do those things anymore, so I just want to know if that included that in there. Human factor was brought up, too. You got to keep in fact that people are human, and we are going to treat stuff at home, and we're going to take vitamins, and we're going to take supplements, we're going to go do our saunas, we're going to get massages, we're going to exercise, we're going to get out in the sunlight, get our vitamin D, get the things we need to stay healthy. So you, I know that that does not include human factor, but maybe it does. If you can better explain that, I would love to know that. I know Dr. Fauci's taken some major heat because a lot of the graphs that he gave throughout the United States didn't actually come to fruitation in many areas. So a lot of these places planned extreme measures, and then it didn't come to fruit. So I have questions about graphs and things like this, because some of these states really shut down their cities, and they're in serious trouble, and it didn't even end up with 89 people in the hospital instead of thousands that were predicted. I can tell you, today when I was listening to the thing about the cell phone data, I had some big concerns, because it said two weeks ago, we were down, and now we're back up. We also had an Easter weekend in there, and I know that some people were making trips to go to the grocery store, get things for the holiday. I know that people probably did do some travel, but we were also around that time told that we could start going outside, and we could go to parks, and we could take drives and things like that. And I know people, I heard motorcycles out, I heard a lot of things out, so I know that added to those numbers, but those are the things that you want us to do for mental health, and I don't think that we should take that number and use that data against us for this ordinance when you told us to go and take the drives and to go do those things for our mental health. I'm concerned about all the businesses that have already made innovations. I feel like kind of this is a slap in the face, because there's a lot of places that have made some really, really good innovations to keep their businesses open. I personally bought a lot of disinfectant supplies, and I'm the last of it. If anyone knows how to get Clorox wipes, please let me know. I'm struggling, and I'm down to the last of them in my business. I spent a lot of money buying cleaning supplies for every room to meet the CDC guidelines, and I feel like a lot of people spent money, and if you close these businesses down, now we spent all this money on this disinfectant and things to meet the guidelines, and now you're shutting us down. The strain on businesses has me very concerned. People that are single income, that are single parents, if you shut down their only line of income, many of these loans people can't get. The whole PPP thing's a whole tricky thing. I looked into it, but it was really tricky, and then if you don't follow the guidelines, you owe the money. And some of these people took $75,000 loans, so that's a lot of money we're talking about here. I'm just small and change, I'm not a big business, I'm very small, I'm individual. I'm worried about the strain on the community for shutting down the businesses, shutting down any chance to leave your home for things except for essentials. Some families are struggling, and the mental health is, it's worth 34 days, and I can tell you, it's been hard for me. I'm a very social person, and this has been difficult. I can tell you that it's been a month since I filled my car. It went four weeks before I had to fill my vehicle, and I drive a minivan. I mean, that's how little driving I have done. I'm worried about the amount of suicides, and I would like to see the data of how many suicides we've had since we had our first case. I think those numbers need to be figured in to the information, because it is a concern. I mean, the impact economically with people's money and other things. Just one other thing I wanted to, you brought up some of the healthcare systems that were strained, particularly Italy and some of those. Those are socialized healthcare systems, so how are they comparable to our healthcare systems when they are socialized healthcare systems? And the information I've read is they didn't have a lot of beds per population, and that's why they ended up with the problems they did. I also want to know if there's data to support heat killing the viruses, sunlight, vitamin D, things like that. Is there any type of information of things that we can do to help keep ourselves healthy? And I thank you for everything you guys do. I know this is a hard job.
Perfect timing. Thank you. Welcome.
All right. I'm Bethany Boydin, and kind of piggybacking off of what my mom just said. So I'm a freshman in college, have been ripped out of my life pretty much, just, I was out in Sioux City, living there, being with my friends all the time, learning how to live on my own, and that all got taken away in pretty much a blink of an eye. And so I struggle with depression and anxiety, and just something for you guys to keep in mind, I know this is hard, I respect everything you do, and I know it's hard deciding what is best for certain people, what is best for everyone overall, but I really think you do need to take into account that kids my age are struggling right now, and I know a lot of other, like, older people are as well. But we had to just completely do a 360 with everything, just going to school, and it's a lot of stress even going online for school and doing all these things, so just keep in mind, yeah, the mental health people. Loveland, Colorado, they just did their shelter in place, and their suicide rates are skyrocketing. And so they now made a change to that last night. And so a lot of times, I, when I get stressed out or really bad anxiety, or just, I can't be at home with my family, I have a six-person family, they drive me insane, I need to just get away sometimes, and I do enjoy going to parks and just being outside. So I don't know, maybe opening the parks, I don't know if even that's an option, but just something that kids are allowed to go out, and they are allowed to kind of just get things off of their mind, and not feel like they're trapped in their house and feel like they're being watched everywhere they go and targeted to see who they're being in contact with and everything. But yeah, thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you. Any other input? I'm not seeing any. Before I go to discussion with the council, I do want to ask the council if you have any more questions for the doctors, because if you don't, I'd like to make sure we cut them loose. Not seeing any. We really appreciate all of your time and...
Counselor...
Yes, yes.
We do have one that's unrelated to our presentation here this afternoon, but I have had, I mean, we heard about ultraviolet light, I think at our last meeting, and I've had others in my line of business question ultraviolet light and its effectiveness. UV light seemed to be effective against SARS and MERS viruses, wondering what the studies show with the coronavirus. There's a lot of surfaces that are difficult to clean that, you know, are made up of texture, so comment would be appreciated.
Yeah, I can tell you that we've looked into UV light, vaporized hydrogen peroxide, as well as your usual bleach-type chemicals and that sort of thing. All of them are extremely effective in killing this virus. We're in the process now of putting up a UV light sterilization area in our Fargo Hospital as we speak, and we've been using the hydrogen peroxide vaporization in all of our medical centers, all of our major medical centers throughout the system. But yes, it's quite effective.
Thank you, but I would like to say I don't believe it's recommended that you use it on, on ourselves or on humans, because it disrupts the DNA of the virus, and it would have the potential to do the same for us, so it's, it's better to be used on different products or surfaces, as I understand it.
Oh, you're absolutely right. It's best used for personal protective equipment or for sterilization of instruments. It's not meant for human consumption.
Thank you. I just wanted to make that clear.
This is Dr. Elliott. Great question. We currently are using UV light to decontaminate our N95 masks. About 10 minutes of UV light can treat an N95 mask, so we're currently doing that as a method for personal protective equipment extension of their lives. We think we can safely do five UV light treatments for each N95 mask. In addition, for a couple of years now, we've been using light emitting robots in our hospital rooms, terminal cleans for our hospital rooms in between cases and at the end of the day for our surgery suites. So yes, indeed, we're aware of the technology, and it's actively used here in Sioux Falls.
Thank you. And once again, I want to thank the doctors for all of their time. Your expertise was invaluable. Thank you.
Counselor Neidert?
Yes. Counselor Reckie.
As long as we've, as long as we've kind of varied off just a little bit into this discussion, I guess I've got one question I'd like to ask the doctors as well. I read, you know, you read a lot of stuff, and you want to know if some of it's any good or not. I read that drinking, you know, room-temperature water, you know, like 15 minutes, sipping on it all day long was good, and following that with gargling with salt water, because it chases, if you do get in, if you do have some of the virus, it chases it down into the stomach acid, which kill it, which kills it. And I was just wondering if, you know, I think this is a positive conversation to have, you know, if there's some of these things that, you know, are working on a preventative side, or if you, you know, again, have someone in your household that might be bringing it home to you, and so doing those things actually help. Is, can one of the doctors address that one? Sipping room temp water basically all day long, so you're just constantly swallowing, you know, if, you might have someone in your household. I have, I have a son who works in a pharmacy, so, you know, I'm just concerned what he might be bringing home, so there's that. And then, and then they said gargling frequently with salt water is the same thing, chases it to the stomach, and the stomach acids kill it.
So to address that, and I've been asked that before, and I've actually discussed that with my infectious disease colleagues as well, and there is no data to support that, and it, it does not work. However, that being said, it's not harmful, there's, you certainly could do it, but obviously, if we, if it was proven to be a use, a measure that would prevent infection, we absolutely would be endorsing it, but at this point, we cannot.
Thank you. Okay, I think with that, we will cut you loose. Thank you very much. For the city council questions, discussion regarding the proposed stay-at-home order? Counselor Staley. Slow today. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, let me say that this has, this whole thing since Wednesday, Tuesday night, has really spurred a very high level of awareness, I think, within our community. And I do believe that there is a increased renewed willingness to adhere to the necessary steps to make sure, ensure that everybody is going to be safe in our community. And I also think that the people on the side of wanting this shutdown, the, the safe, the shelter-at-home ordinance, probably are thirsty for information, and having this, having the medical community come forth and tell us that we need to maybe add a 10% reduction on the curve is going to be a hopeful thing for them. Got to realize that we just got the information on Tuesday night, so we've all been digesting what this ordinance really has as an impact to everyone. And Mr. Jones, I, Troy, I had already written down earlier, and I've been saying it today, the carrot and the stick, so I'm not trying to steal from you there, buddy, but it's... So I'm not trying to steal from you there, buddy, but it's coming to me, and I'm always going to take this approach, that if we can have a carrot, offer a carrot instead of hitting people with the stick, that's going to be a much more palatable thing and a positive thing for our community. I said to all my, most of my colleagues, I've been saying, let's look for win-win opportunities here. What can we do to minimize the impact on everybody? I am not inclined to impose any kind of fines on our citizens. I know right now we have the lingering ordinance that is going to impose a fine if a business has more than 10 people in certain businesses. I'm not going to put that on our residents. I can't do that. I do think that if we tell our residents we need 10% more, they're going to, they're going to be with us, they're going to want to do that. We're talking about essential businesses. Golf courses are essential under this, greenhouses are not. The bike path is essential. Going to buy a car is not. Zambros, you can go to Walmart and get your prescription filled and wander over and buy a book or something, but you can't go into Zambros. They would not be essential. So I think the winners and losers here are very problematic. When we look in the Argus Leader about the list of businesses and facilities that are showing up with the new cases, they would all be essential. None of them are going to be closed down. So I think that the problem that needs to be addressed is, is working towards helping these bigger businesses, and Troy, thank you, because you, or maybe it was you who said, you're really wanting to get a grasp on what you can do to help. I think this is where we're going to be going. But we don't want to penalize the smaller businesses either. So I was hoping, two weeks ago, I brought up an amendment to the lingering ordinance that was going to meld into it the proclamation that the mayor made, talking about the 20% occupancy threshold for patrons. To me, it made sense to take the 20% number and add employees to it.
Join the meeting.
So we are asking, we are asking businesses to scale back to help just with that social distancing. So I tried to put that in two weeks ago, but it was too big of an amendment to fit, and it was going to, going to cause a gap in there from what we had to going to nothing for a week before this first reading came through. So I have been talking to some of my colleagues about the possibility of adding that to it, and I know the mayor, and since we're having this discussion about where we could go, I don't know where, with the current ordinance, I don't know what could be gutted out of that as an amendment to make it palatable. So we're kind of going back to the lingering one. So I was wanting to add some kind of language of what the mayor had with the 20%, but last night, Stacy Coystra said that that might be too big of a change, and again, we're going to be stuck with having nothing in the lingering ordinance for a week as we're trying to, well, actually, our next meeting is in May. So I, Counselor Neitz and I talked last night about a possibility of a resolution, which is, of course, not binding, but to, if we could set up some, some strong recommendations from the council as to what we want to see in the community, that would be separate from the lingering ordinance. So I mean, I'm just, I think what we need to do is, we need to do something. I don't think, I think the public wants to see some kind of action, and I think that 10% thing does need to be addressed, that we say, that we want to cut that curve, I think responsibly, we say we cut the, we're going to cut that back by the 10% from the 25% we're doing, we're willing to, let's work together to make it 35%. What things can we do? So it's, this is really a wonderful experience for us on the council, because we've been doing a lot of collaborative brainstorming to say, you know, we've heard these things from the public, how can we put this legislation together? So that's, right now, I think we could get a resolution on, as new business next week, if that's where we want to go.
Very good. Other counselors?
Amy Elliott has left the meeting.
I will just chime in, and I know after our meeting, there was a handful of us that talked to constituents at a safe distance, I'll say, and had some really good conversations as far as what could be added and done. And I do like the idea of the resolution. I'd like to see that when possible, of having a statement in conjunction with the mayor's proclamation of just reiterating some of those things. We won't run into the substantial issue then, and I think that it will ask for that voluntary compliance for us to say, this is what we really want you to do. Here's what you should do, because people are doing it responsibly. I think that sometimes when we make heavy-handed decisions and force people to do things, they maybe push back a little bit harder than what they would if we said, will you please do this? And just curve that, because like Mr. Graham was saying earlier, we've got to get these people back open. We want to prolong this and make sure that the healthcare systems are adequately employed and caring for people, but we've got to get people back working. We just have to. People can't make it for many, many months. And while balancing all the other things that come with it, we have to, we have to maintain that. So I would, I would love to see that, Counselor. I'm glad you're working on it. I think it's certainly a viable option for us to consider. I know the question was asked, and if I can ask you a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor, as far as bringing some amendments, based on the conversations in the EOC and those inside baseball conversations, what amendments do you want to see? I mean, I guess I want to flip it back on you and say, you're the one in the EOC, you're the one that are having all the conversations, and we get daily updates, and you've been phenomenal at communicating information to us, and I'm very grateful for that. But having those conversations daily, what are those things that you're recommending or suggesting based on that?
So I think it's important for us to remember, as people setting the policy, is to set policy that has the maximum efficacy. Okay? And so what you just heard today, over the last three hours, is that there is, we're hitting this line of capacity. We're at the top. Anything we can do to help with mitigation will give them, I think, desired breathing room. So what could those be? Where are the problems? Where are the issues? The issues are where people gather en masse, okay? The issues are, you know, to Troy's point, he's talking about some businesses that are taking the right steps, there's a lot that aren't, okay? And so what do we have to do to, do we need temperature checks that are required at large businesses for employees going in and out to ensure that if an employee is running a temp, they're not allowed in the facility where there's 100 or more people already in there? Do we need to have people wearing masks in Hy-Vee's, Lowe's, Home Depots, have that be in ordinance? Do we need to look at some of those things that aren't restricting business? We're not telling a business, listen, you can operate your manufacturing facility, but it's in ordinance that you need to check temps, and anyone below this needs to be turned away. I mean, those things aren't restrictive on business. There's a staffing protocol, it sounds like we have some, a lot of businesses that are doing that already are doing without nurses. You don't have to be a nurse to check a temp, you know? Someone just checks the temp at the front desk, and you go in or you don't. So those would help, some of those measures, I think, would help in not taking the full, the full stay-at-home ordinance, because I think it's pretty much decided we're either voting that down or we're pulling it, and we're trying to figure out if that's the way to do that. But is there amendments that can happen to that no lingering ordinance, or does it have to be a new item that we notice and bring forward? So I don't have all the answers. Those are a couple that we've talked about, to ensure business compliance, because all we can have done right now with the large employees have asked. I've had question, I've had conference calls with the CEOs of probably the 50 biggest employers of this city right now, and have begged, pleaded, and done anything I can to get them to comply. Well, I'm still getting whistleblower emails all the time from employees at those companies saying, my employer still is not doing this, my employer, so I don't know what else I can do. And some whistleblowers are at some pretty substantial companies that should know better. And so that's the challenge we have right now. So I am, I'd love to figure that out with the council between now and Tuesday, if you guys feel that there is something that we could collectively agree on that would help us move the needle.
And would those be...